Thank you for coming tonight. Please stand, pledge allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ready and just
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws in 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Esparx Press issue June 16, 2016. All municipal clerks in the townships and the boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting of notices have been made. Minutes' approval. Motion for minutes' approval?
Motion.
Second. Thank you, Sam. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boyce? Oppose, I'm sorry. And abstentions? There we go, Mr. Boyce. All right, Boyce. All right. So next up, we have, communications are on file in the Board Office, Secretary's Office, and reports, superintendent's report.
So we're going to begin this evening with our bi-annual Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse Report. One of the things that I think we've taken great strides to do over the past couple of years is to really use this evening, rather than simply reading off statistics, which were required to do by code, to talk about some of the things that are happening in our schools that we think really impact the decision-making of students and help our students make better choices. We're not naive to think with six high schools and 11,500 or so teenagers that some folks aren't going to make some poor choices along the way, but I think that we have an inordinate number of supportive programs here to help our young folks along. And one of those sort of constants over the past decade or so has been John Morello's presentation. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Shayna Howe, who will deliver that report.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, it's certainly my pleasure. We'll discuss the numbers when we do have a special guest here with us. Good evening. And as you can see, with an overview of the incident, we had 76 incidents for this phase, which was January to June of 2016. And when we talk about the numbers, I always think it's important to recognize that there are students who have these numbers. And as Mr. Sampson said, we have a student in all of their cases, in all capacities. And the way we do that is certainly in partnership with our families, our faculty and staff. But I have to commend our faculty and staff that over the last couple of years, the reason that this is nearly such a positive story is all the work that has been done to really look at the data, understand what's happening, and then look at alternatives and especially interventions. If we look more specifically at each category, violence included 11 incidents of simple assault, one sex offense, eight incidents of threats, and 15 fights. There were three total incidents of vandalism, and under the category of substance abuse, the number of students found who were under the influence was 26, and the number of students engaged in possession or distribution was 15. The predominant substance continues to be marijuana, which is really consistent with state and national data, but we continue to have a real sense of urgency with working with all of these teams and our community to continue to find means to combat substance abuse. In fact, last year, we had retired DEA agent Paul Year present to all of our faculty and staff, and this year, we had Mike Litterer, who's actually at Manalbun High School. He is the Deputy Director of Prevention and Link, who continues to share with us all the current drug trends and ensure that we're really focused on prevention and intervention, because we know that it's important for our students. Our next chart includes our hit harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations for Phase Two, and we are required to include both the confirmed incidents and then those that were not confirmed because they did not meet the definition as required by the anti-mulching bill rights. We continue to take a very aggressive approach when it comes to investigating any potential incidents, but our real focus, and what's even more important, is ensuring that we have a positive school venture. Two weeks ago, it celebrated a really recognized case of effect. This week, we are recognizing Anti-Violence Week in all of our schools, and we have a series of programs that got highlighted over the course of October. But what's really important is the work that's done throughout the year, and the work that's done with our students that serve as museum ambassadors and that ensure that our climate and that our culture is positive and safe. We certainly have many other programs, and joining us this evening is Mr. John Morello. As Mr. Sampson said, he has been working with our students for over 10 years now, and this week, he'll actually be in all of our schools. I have the pleasure of being present today at Central Borough High School and then at Raze. And as he's been leaving, one of the students actually said, "This man speaks our language." So I want to introduce John, who's going to talk a little bit about the program and really the tremendous impact he has on our students. Mr. John Morello?
Doing good. And what's happening? Mary Ann, extinguish that. Well done. Thank you for everything that you guys are doing. My name is John Morello, and I come here from Massachusetts. I've been coming here for a few years now, ten years apparently, doesn't, doesn't use say. And I do a one-man show. My background was in stand-up comedy and in acting. After doing stand-up comedy for six or seven years across the country, I started writing a one-man show that was never intended to really be put up in high schools or colleges or middle schools. I was writing this show because I was dealing with the addiction in my own family. I lost a brother when I was 11-years-old with run driver, and while I was doing stand-up, I had another brother that was on the streets using carpool. And I was trying to make sense of my own life and how, as somebody who I often perceive myself as like even more of a screw-up than the rest of my family, how did I make it through? Okay, and yet here, my two brothers are gone. And I was just writing this show, and I was just thinking about all the different characters that I grew up with in my life, whether it was family members, whether it was uncles and aunts, grandparents, or just town stoners that I knew and that I once was, and just all different kinds of people. And so I started putting this in a show, and a student assistance counselor from New Jersey was in the audience, and she invited me to come to her school. And next thing I know, I did the ASAP conference, which is for all Saks in New Jersey, if you don't know. And I did that conference, and when I got off the stage, at this point in my life, I was distinct. I was driving a tour bus, I was acting, I was doing commercial work, doing e-mark videos, washing windows, doing all the live jobs that I could do to support my craft. And then I walked off the stage from doing this conference and sort of sharing from my part, and there was about 50 student assistance counselors with their calendars out waiting to bring me to their school. And I was like, wow, I think I just found a new career. I started doing it a year after doing the show. My brother passed away from an overdose. So any idea of me doing this sort of as a part-time kind of side project, gets this out of my system kind of thing, that was out the window, and I doubled down. I now do a lot of hundred shows a year across the country. I took the show, Dr. Swade's sort of in last year, there were some camps out there for students abroad. And I love what I do, and I can't do it, and that wouldn't be done if it wasn't for you supporting it. I wish every school district had a word like this that saw the importance of what I do. Just giving you an idea, it's a one-man show, it's different characters, it's funny, it's sad, there's poetry in it, and the basic idea of it is that our lives are connected. In the show, we see one life not even knowing it's affecting another life for an amazingly life-changing positive experience, and then we have another life affecting somebody else for a horrible negative experience that they could have never foreseen. But it's basically that our lives are connected and our actions matter. And so it deals with issues of substance abuse, inequality, and choices, and identity, and depression. All these things are kind of tied together, and really are connected. It shows culture. I've been doing it since 2002 now, probably over 100 kids, and I feel really lucky. I just wanted to come here tonight to thank you. I meet your kids, they're great. I want you to know how smart they are. I don't want you to take them for granted. I know, as a parent myself, sometimes we get into sort of a communication rut with our own kids, and it's one of the weird things if you're in education and sometimes we're better at helping somebody else's needs sometimes than our own kids, and it's hard. We get into these ruts of communication with our own kids. I just want you to know, and that your kids are really amazing, and they need you, and they need you to be consistent. And I'm just going to read a few emails from some kids, and then I'll let you go. This one I got. Hi, my name is Dr. McDeane. I attended the conference today about St. Mary's, and I thought your performance was moving. I don't have any personal experiences with things like drugs or being around anyone with drug problems, but I feel that you got the message across to everybody in that auditorium. Out of the whole presentation, I thought it was great, like you showed how drugs affected everyone in the city and our community. I only wish, if you went to my high school, would the performance have been progress. There are so many people under the influence of drugs that I choose not to hang out with, and I feel that maybe your performance can bring them back to reality. I just want to say thank you again for the great performance. The freshman at Valley Central High School, I'll help you. Your kids are making good choices, and your kids are smart, and this is stuff that they're thinking about. This is one from an ed theater in Kansas. This was by far one of the best ways to present this type of material. He didn't preach to us about not doing drugs. He actually did, he even told us not to do that. He was so very real with everyone there. He showed us each and every way that addiction affects us all, the way it affects the addict's family, the friends, the instant bystanders. He performed monologues to portray what each of them went through, and it was truly amazing to watch it unfold. He didn't make, I feel like I'm the, I'm on the back here, but I'm just saying this to say this. A high recommendation for any middle school, high school, or college group. I truly think everyone in those age groups needs to see this performance. I also believe parents of any age child need to see this as well. It shows us what we are thinking, what we are really going through, and that we do mean that we're just not always sure how to ask for help in fear of disappointing. This man has all these tendencies for a lot of crap, and it's like, and he is taking it and doing something positive for others. And yeah. I got one from this kid. I like when I get these ones. I know you don't remember me. I'm a student whom I like to sometimes refer to with all kinds of portability, and I don't support that, but I won't, but I just want. I know you don't remember me. I'm a student from one of the schools you spoke at, but I just want to say thanks again for everything. I'm sure you get a lot of these emails about how your show was impactful, but I, but I don't know. It made you think a lot. You came in November, it's not April, and I still think about it. I don't want to waste your time with a lot of talk about my life, and I know you have more important. If I just thought that maybe you could read this smile, knowing it truly made a difference. Not just for me, for even a month, but, and then forgot, but for me. I really don't think I'll ever forget what you portrayed and when I saw you playing the game.
John, where are you next?
That's a good question.
Manalbun tomorrow.
Manalbun tomorrow at dark 30:00 in the morning. You know, I think they started 5:00 AM. 7:30. Then I'm doing this other show that I do now, it's called Rock Shop Words, which is all only some short stories instead of more of a dramatic thing like, but I think I'll be doing that, I figure I'll do, I'm going to be at Mr. Robinson's School on Wednesday. Going to be at Jeremy's School on Wednesday, and there'll be a pretty cool township, I haven't, that's on Thursday, and I was at Manalbun already, going to be at Manalbun again on Thursday. And then Colts next, with the daughter on Friday. Wow, I got it. So yeah, that's where I'm going. And I guess, for all those girls, I just want to say that recently, I was sitting around backstage with a bunch of kids, and you guys are students, aren't they like this? But, sorry. I was sitting backstage with a bunch of kids, and there was about 25 or 30 of them in the circle. And I said, you know, just, just for the hell of it, I said, "How many people here think that your parents are either too strict, not strict enough, or it's too strict?" And there's 25 kids, and I'd say, I think it was 18 or 19 kids, said not strict enough. I just hate that. And however you want to describe it, work that into your mind. But thank you very much for all the things that you're doing, and thanks for the time.
So thank you, John. Thank you, Ms. Howe. And again, we try to, we try to take these reporting requirements and share with our public and our community a little bit of a flavor of some of the things that are happening in the schools. And we were able to work it out, you know, in years past, we used to have John, you know, a high school might have him out in April, and somebody else would have him out in February, and it was really disconnected across the district. And Ms. Howe really took some time to plan in conjunction with October to get him into our schools over a week-long period where it's real consistent to have him come out this evening, to bring a program to the Raze Academy as well the past couple of years. So we think there's really been an exponential impact with that. As a high school principal, you know, I had the good fortune to have him out years ago, and he was all the kids talked about for weeks afterwards. So we're pleased to have programs like that, but you know, that's just one piece of the, one piece of the puzzle. And last year, we met with a company, because the rage now in some school districts is to do a lot of this stuff with videos, and they have these sort of like pre-made videos that students can watch for extra credit and things like that, and they can see a situation, and they can, they can see how it unfolds, they can respond to it, and some schools, some high schools use it as a reward system and others. And you know, we talked to a lot of the folks in our building, and we talked, more importantly, to the students, and we said, you know, "Would you find value in something like that?" And one of the things that the kids really came back with was the programs that are in the school are powerful, and we don't want to let those go. We don't, you know, seeing somebody, connecting with somebody, having that conversation, we think would, is more impactful than seeing a scenario in some other, in some other vein. And so, you know, when we're talking about educating the whole child and the importance to programs like this are, you know, every bit is important, as some of the academic programs we have, and there's a balance there for all kids. And we have a responsibility to our community to educate the whole child, and we take that very, very seriously, and we try to give everyone a sliver of that on evenings like this. So thank you. A few other items in my report. We had our annual Spooktacular Window Painting Contest this year, hands down one of the best events in the school district. It is a little bit of project management on the students' part, so they've got to sketch out their drawing, work in art class, see that through fruition, come that day, get that, that painting up on the window. It's a little bit connection to the community, where our students are out and about in downtown Freehold painting. I think they painted over 90 windows this year, and so our students, you know, when you walk up and down the main street in Freehold, and Mr. Moses and I always walk it together every year, and you see the community members interacting with our students, having all these conversations, and seeing the talent that we have in the school system, and again, expressing that in different ways. Having the students outside on a beautiful day, completing a project, and interacting with our community is a win-win-win, as far as I'm concerned. So we had that this week, and we'll honor, we'll honor the winners at the November board meeting, but I have to, I have to thank Federici's in Freehold. You know, every year, they provide somewhere in the range of 60 to 65 pies, and they feed all of those students, and they just do it, you know, no charge, and it's just a thank you from them to the school system, which I think is fantastic. Our open houses are continuing over the next couple of weeks for our various magnet programs. We try to space them out to give parents of incoming ninth graders a real opportunity to attend as many as they want, so that they can make the right choice with their child about where they may want to apply, and so that's ongoing as well. We had a really cool event this year that we were able to pull off that I think did a number of things in one. So we were, we had a district, our district track meet for the Shore Conference. We were able to bring all six high schools together to fulfill the requirements from the Shore Conference, but also to have, have a district-wide event where we had all of our students competing against one another in sort of one-stop shopping, and we hadn't done that in years. And so, you know, the Seekers did a nice job in planning that, in particular, John Heine really, really pulled that together for us, and it was, any time where we can bring students from the six high schools together in that vein is a powerful experience. So we were able to do that on September 27th, and I was real proud that we got that off the ground this year. Financial aid night, we had for our junior and senior parents on October 6th. We've, we've really revamped that evening over the past couple of years and brought some admissions experts in. You know, the whole process, the whole college application process is, has become such a disconcerting process for parents and students alike, that we try to, over the course of the school year, hold a number of events to help everybody through that process. And by bringing in an admissions expert who can answer some real honest questions about what a parent should be thinking about, might be wanting to do, and to stay and do that, we think is a, is a positive experience for our community, and we had a, that was, we rotate these events through our six high schools. That particular evening was at Howe High School, and I know that we had several hundred parents attend that, so it was, it went really, really well. Also, we're not going to recognize them until November, but I'm pleased to announce that Freehold Township High School received an Ocean First Grant, Model Classroom Grant for $10,000 last week, so a nice feather in the cap. We'll be able to redesign a room based on that. If you recall, two years ago, Manalbun High School had won that as well, so just a nice, nice accolade for the school district and for Freehold Township High School. We've got ongoing training. One of the things that we've been really pushing for, and we have sort of a two-year roadmap in mind, is the district's transitioning to a block schedule, and that block schedule will launch in two years' time. And one of the things that we're really focused on is providing as much professional development for our faculty and staff around what a real student-centered environment looks like. So, you know, the days where we think we can stand up for seven periods a day and talk for 47 minutes and have students take notes and regurgitate that back to us, you know, we have to continue to move beyond that, to really engage students in their owner, in their learning, to provide student ownership and voice in what they're doing, and we think that an extended period that lends itself to opportunities for students to collaborate and create and work together on projects is a powerful way to do that. And so we've really been designing our professional development around that very specifically the past few months and will over the next couple of years. And one, a little piece to that that I think has been some awesome training for our teachers is all of our Algebra I teachers are working through training with an individual we brought in that are, that every, every question sort of starts with a conundrum, starts with a dilemma, and you've got to work backwards into the math to solve that. And so we're using some online software that's free and I think real powerful, and we've seen a number of our teachers really start to redesign some of their lessons around that. As a social studies person, I will be the first to admit that mathematics was not my, was not my strong suit in high school, and one of the reasons I really feel that way is that oftentimes, when I sat in the classroom, I didn't always see the connection to why it was important, why I needed to know it. And I think that really hooking students in, with a problem, with a real-world dilemma, and then working backwards into the mathematics through that is a way to really provide students with a clear understanding of some of the real-world applications of mathematics and the power behind that. So we've got a lot of training this year with our Algebra I teachers, and again, that's in concert with our larger training around student-centered instruction. Tomorrow, we have our first executive student cabinet meeting. I'm looking forward to that, that will really set the stage for their role this year with Dr. Hazel and myself, and you know, we're in year five of our strategic plan, so a piece to that is going to be looking at the planning for our next strategic plan and how we envision that. One of the, one of the first steps that we've taken with that, and we haven't, we haven't published the results yet, but we're sorting through the data, we surveyed our graduates from 2012 to 2015, and we asked them a number of open-ended questions, and I'm really pleased to say that I think we have around 1,500 students from that time that have taken the time to fill that survey out, and that's going to be a real critical piece to our next planning process for what we want to do as a school system and the student voices. You know, they live it, they're fresh. These are students who are out either in college or in the workforce right now, so they're really connected to how their high school experience impacted them and their road now, and we're getting some real, real powerful feedback from, from that survey. That concludes my report. Mr. Moses.
Mr. Sampson. I thank Shayna for your presentation. Before we go on, I just wanted to second what Mr. Sampson said about Federici's. Mike Federici is a prime example of someone coming from an area and giving back. Mike was a student of mine a long time ago at the Borough High School, and he doesn't forget where he came from, so that's a really nice thing. Next, we have a board report, and we had one board report, and that's Curriculum and Instruction, Amy?
Vincent's got it.
Oh, Vincent's got it.
Hello, everyone. So we just had our committee meeting on academics, and today, I'm going to just be talking about two things that we spent most of the meeting on. So the first is something that relates to a Computer Science Career Pathways Grant that we have. Now, we have one of the finest computer science magnet programs in the state. I've had friends who have attended the computer science magnet program, and they've only ever said good things, one of whom actually ultimately attended Carnegie Mellon, and he testified as to how uncannily effective that program was at really preparing him for his curriculum at Carnegie Mellon. But part of the nature really of being a four-year magnet program in high school often means that we're not able to take everyone. Often, this is, you know, we're not able to take people who might develop the interest in high school, or might not have taken all the academic prerequisites during middle school that are required for acceptance into the magnet program. So what this grant really is all about, what it facilitates is allowing, it facilitates us creating a pathway course for a sequence of students in grades 10 through 12 who may in fact possess a latent interest in computer science or develop it while they're freshmen, but who might not necessarily be members of our computer science magnet program. Now, obviously, part of developing a good program means finding good partners. There are mandates that we, as a district, form an advisory board for such a program, but I've heard from the team that, you know, we're really putting in the time and effort to make sure that these advisors live up to their name and actually advise rather than preside, as many of these advisory boards often end up being. More than that, we're also looking for an appropriate environment for, you know, in which these students can engage with such an innovative program, and we're looking into perhaps fostering a new type of classroom for that. We took a tour of Bellworks, which is a little bit of a hotbed for new technology and entrepreneurial spirit. It does look like a stereotypical startup incubator, but there's no reason for why that should preclude us from perhaps divining some inspiration from them. But there are no guarantees on whether or not we'll actually be incorporating ping-pong tables into our classrooms yet. But one last aspect that we're really looking into is allowing these students to go beyond just shadowing and actually... just shadowing and actually having them venture into their community and create tangible products, their own applications, and in doing so, also create tangible experiences. You know, from a little bit of personal experience back when I was a student at Biotechnology High School, a few students and I, you know, actually decided to create the website that we had and run it. And through the trials and tribulations of it all, it really was one of the most powerful learning experiences for us. And this is definitely something that, if we can, we would want to recreate for our students at Freehold Regional High School District, at the district. The other thing that we talked about were curriculum implementation workshops. You know, it's a bit self-evident, but it's really important to emphasize how the spread of best practices is so vital. Ideas really are only as influential as how well they're communicated. One specific notion that we honed in on is the possibility of really, over the course of the next several years, moving beyond traditional textbooks. And alternatives are more than just the eBooks that we've all heard about so much, but really the suites of tools that are enabled by the mass availability of laptops and other digital devices that students have today. You know, and to be honest, textbooks are a little bit removed from the reality of what students, like myself and students in high school experience today. We have access to more materials than ever before. And I think that perhaps the most important skill for us to develop is the sense to diagnose what sources are credible, what sources are not so credible. And there are scores of digital tools that are available to help cultivate that intuition of skepticism. Obviously, our teachers and our curriculums will still have a role in curating our classroom materials, but at least we'll be preparing students on a medium that is more reminiscent of how they're actually going to access information and think critically about it in the future. So, you know, from what I'm hearing from the, the committee, we are definitely moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Vincent. And I was, I was remiss, and we have also finance. Michael?
Okay, thank you very much. We had a meeting back on September nineteenth. We went over the two shared services agreements that are on the agenda for this evening. First one's with Freehold Township for the water treatment plant operations at Culp's Neck. And then we also discussed the shared services agreement with the township of Manalapan. Getting back to Culp's Neck, as many of you are aware, there's a cell phone tower there, which is actually owned by, isn't, but they don't want to manage it anymore. So, they just notified us that they're going to, the American Tower is actually the company that's going to be managing that tower. Doesn't really mean anything to us. We'll still be getting rent on that. We went over some ongoing facility issues. Some classrooms are being impacted at Marlborough. Some air filtration devices are put into the ceiling. We briefly discussed the track at Manalapan. And then we also discussed some planning issues going around with respect to the Howell Sports Complex. And then finally, we were just briefed on some other issues, such as FEMA reimbursing us for money we spent due to a big storm in January of this year. And then finally, the audit will start in November, so we're probably going to hear from the auditors at our November meeting.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, next up is public participation. We have first up, and you-
Just to note that there is an addendum on the back table. It has to do with submission of an application for a STEM grant for Manalapan High School. Mr. Tiscano?
And just for the, just to note that, that the resolution is accurate. In executive session, the board also discussed in box number seven, matters of pending or anticipated litigation, case number zero-two-dash-one-six-dash-one-two-nine-five.
Thank you. Okay, you can speak either from the podium up there or your seat wherever you feel more comfortable. First up is Joseph Turner from Clifton.
My name is Joseph Turner. I'm a teacher, so a private degree, but as, you know, sometimes teachers have a private degree. I graduated from Freehold High School in 2009. Last principal there, it sounds like a life center. So, I came from Clifton to speak on behalf of Dr. Brett Holman. I met Dr. Holman in 2006. I was a freshman at the time. And basically, I and my alumni had heard that, we don't know about what's going on, but people were trying to get in touch with him. They said that he wasn't working in the district anymore, and that his character was questioned. And so I'd like to just speak briefly about his character, about his integrity, about his hard work, his dedication. As I said, I met him in 2006. I continued to meet with him regularly until I graduated in 2009. And he, for me, really filled a void for my life, just to say briefly for myself. My father was incarcerated from my childhood, so he was not around until I was in about the eighth grade, and he's still been spotty since then. And so, his role in my life really filled that kind of father male role model that I think a lot of people need, especially at that time in their life. Really provided that guiding and voice that a lot of young people need. And so, just one very quick story. I was a senior in high school, and there was an issue with a girl, and I thought it was the end of the world, and I was so upset about it, and I was up all night, I couldn't stop thinking about this issue. And the very next day, I didn't want to talk to my friends, didn't want to talk to my grandparents, I wanted to talk to Brett Holman. I wanted to meet with him and tell him what was going on. And I later thought about it, and I realized that he was someone who was at an age that was not quite as old as my peers, who could give me some perspective on what was going on, see the doors to the trees, to give that kind of perspective. But he wasn't quite as old as my grandparents, where they were removed from what I was going through. And so, really, when I thought about it, that's really what father is, someone who is just older than your peers, who can, kind of like they say, if you're a fish in the water, you don't quite know your end word. So your peers can't quite give that same perspective for you. But the last time my grandfather probably sent a girl out for ice creams in 1956, so he probably couldn't give you the same perspective as he could in that moment. And it really was impactful for me to have that voice. I, I, as I said, went on to be a social studies teacher. I teach up in North Jersey. I live in Clifton. I came, drove over an hour a week here to speak on his behalf because of the impact that he's had on my life, on my really perspective of how I even approach students, to think of what void might I be filling, what hat am I wearing in this moment, that may mean even more to them than I realize in that moment. Because I don't know, even he was thinking of the power of his words to me from a father's perspective, even though that's what I was hearing. I'm very grateful for his impact on my life. His, again, a character and integrity is something that I hope that every time you bring a new professional into the district holds that level of character and integrity and, and impact on students. The district is better for him being in the district. Any district that he goes to, he'll be an amazing asset to that district. And all I'd just like to say is that I'm incredibly grateful for the work that he did here, and he made an amazing impact on us. I truly don't think that I would even be standing there as a social studies teacher without him. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, next up, we have Bridgette and Rich. Is it Contado? Did I say that last name?
Contado.
Contado, sorry.
I would like for gentlemen to speak too. I have a son that's been named Brett Nick. I have a nephew. Upon the consideration of the transportation issue, and there's a statement on their website regarding transportation, and a full mile radius. When I took home a radio frame line, my house was eighteen-five miles. I was ruled by the Jersey Department of Transportation that it has to be on the walkway, and I pulled twenty-one-two miles away from the walkway to where I see, I used a nine block. And it started spending, I took a roll through. I asked Ms. Anderson, she was a senior transportation technician. She didn't know which had the, I don't know, I don't know how to get my turn to the truck school. I have them three days a year, and I was asked, I don't know.
So, so the non-public transportation is not, not something that's in the purview of any of the local districts. So this, it's a state mandated situation. And they're, and they're rigid with the rules on that. What schools do, what districts do, is we pool all of our non-public business, and that's handled by an organization called MoESC, Monmouth Ocean Ed Services Commission. And they, without regard to, you know, municipal lines or district lines, try and aggregate as many kids as possible to get them to and from the non-public schools within the state maximum cost, which is some eight-hundred-and-eighty-four, I think it is, per year. So, it, it's a matter of state law that if the route costs more than eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars a kid, then busing's not provided for that. The eligibility for busing is also determined by the state as far as, you know, whether or not you're remote, and it's the number of miles, and, and you did that math, and you're over the twenty miles. And, you know, the way that they calculate that is, you know, along the walkway and not as the pro flies. So, you know, districts have very little discretion in this area. We're basically implementing a law that's been mandated by the state.
There's no, there's a, there's a, there's not any-
There's not, not on the non-public. What, what does happen sometimes, and it's not within, doesn't run through the local districts, is that parents sometimes get together, or sometimes the non-public school will try and facilitate transportation in like a private way, and, and where parents deal directly with bus, bus companies. They're few and far between, though. You know, the bus companies are, they're pressed for staff, and, and they have their routes out. It all happens at the same time of day. So, you know, the availability of, of drivers and buses on those private bus companies is thin, and they have a tough time getting drivers to begin with. So it, it's a difficult situation, and the position that you're in is a position that many are in. And, you know, over the years that I've done this job, there's been conversations at state legislator levels to talk about, you know, here's, here's what the state law prescribes, and the non-public schools have sort of banded together. And I think that's really the, where the advocacy needs to happen is at the legislative level, because that's, those are the ones that, that drive the law, obviously, write the law. So I'm, I'm sorry, I can't offer you any more advice than perhaps maybe pull together with parents and arrange for private transportation.
Okay, next up is Sally Murray, Marvall.
Hi, my name is Sally Murray. I'm a parent in the Marlboro School District. And I'm here with a group of parents and students from Marlboro High School. We're part of the music boosters, and the students that are here are part of the marching band. And we're here, well, first of all, thank you for allowing us to speak and to welcome us to this public section. We appreciate the time and effort that you give our students throughout the district and to Marlboro High School. It was great to see John's presentation of what he did in terms of substance abuse. More than anything, as a parent, we want our children to feel that they're a part of something, that they're a part of the community, that they have a purpose larger than their, their academic education. And if there's anything that for these students, music has given them that community and that purpose, we feel very blessed that Marlboro, both in the elementary school and in the high school, supports the music programs. My son is a senior, he's not here tonight, but he's a senior, four years in the marching band, four years in the concert band, and he's in the choir this year. Schedule it up a little bit, so people can do that. While, while our, we approached the principal, I feel like I started this conversation with him from an email back in the spring, about this band, they're phenomenal, but they really need uniforms. The uniforms were bought initially in nineteen ninety-one. They were supplemented in the early two thousands, but they're old, they're worn, they're ripped, they're torn. The pants, which are supposed to be navy blue, are faded. The top, which is white, is yellow, yellow, white, stained. If we want these children to feel a part of the community, we have to show them respect. And we really feel that part of that respect is giving them the clothing that they need to wear as part of the band. It's a big expense. We're thinking that it's maybe three, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars for the size of the band that we have. That is, is a big expense. We are very much aware of that. But Marlboro High School has a multi-million dollar budget, so somewhere in that budget there has to be a plan to provide uniforms on a however regular basis, you know, whether it's every ten years, every fifteen years. We're now at twenty-six, so we feel that that's too long. As I said, I opened this conversation up with the principal in the spring. I sent an email, great respect for the supervisor, and the students have great respect for the supervisor. He's very supportive of our school, of our environment, of our community. However, he said there's no money for uniforms. He encouraged us to fundraise for them. As the music boosters, this is what we fundraise for. We buy, we have Indian Music Library for the music program. We have bought it sound equipment. Those are the kinds of, this year, we're fundraising to take the students to Carnegie Hall, to the concert hall in that venue. It's quite an evening. We raised maybe six to eight thousand dollars a year. We put some of the money aside, but this year towards uniforms, about three thousand dollars. We can't put all our money towards that, not all of our students, or the marching band, something we're in the choir. But at that rate, we'll be here another twenty-six years trying to raise money for uniforms. And we think in the district, we know that Manalapan High School has been succeeding with uniforms. We're not sure how that, those costs are provided for. I explored it with Mr. Boylan, and wanted to know how sports teams got their uniforms. I'm sure there's a label. He said that's not part of, marching band is not part of that budget. Marching band is not an extracurricular activity. It's an outgrowth of a class, a music class, so it's part of the curriculum in that budget, but there's no money for it. So, I feel like we're, we kind of don't know which way to go, which is why we're here tonight. I guess, I guess that's all I have to say. We really need uniforms. We're looking for ways that we can get the uniforms. We started early this year at this board meeting, because we know your budget comes up in the spring. So we want to somehow, and I'm saying this as a parent of the student, my son will never wear the uniforms. None of the money that we've fundraised for, for him, he won't benefit from it, but we feel strongly that these students, if you want to know, the students that are succeeding in life, you have to come and see us. They're just terrific. I've spent a lot of time with them over the last forty years. There's many, many football games against other schools in the district and against schools that are outside the district, and everybody has a better chance of getting one than they do. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So, thanks for coming out, Ms. Murray. The, you know, so, just a couple of things. I, I've, I've seen them at Carnegie Hall, so they are, they are awesome. The, I, I, you know, I don't want to- Um, the, I, I, you know, I don't want to speak for Mr. Boylan, but I know that you're right, now is the budget cycle, you know? So the budget cycle is usually done, cast and finalized prior to the, the January one. So, you know, to, to be fair, he would have had his budget done already and none of that allotted. Now, there are, you know, the things are on a cycle, the, the, the band uniforms are more expensive than some of the other items that are on those cycles. Sometimes across the district, um, you know, we'll get uniforms from fundraising or sometimes a uniform comes out of, folks say, well, where did that, you know, where did those uniforms come from? It's not necessarily the district paying for those. Sometimes booster clubs will buy uniforms much more readily year over year. Um, I'll sit down with Mr. Boylan, I'll, I'll follow up with him tomorrow. Uh, we'll take a look at the, at, at, at the budgeting process. Uh, you know, I'm going to look at it from soup to nuts, you know, from, from where we are and, and, uh, I have terrific respect for the, for the music program, uh, in, in all of our, all of our buildings. Mr. Dalton does a fantastic job over there and, um, you know, nothing but good things come out of the, the music program. So I don't know, um, I don't know what the long history is, you know, like you mentioned nineteen ninety-one and then, and a refresh in the early two thousands. I, I don't know, sitting up here, what that cycle has or hasn't been, uh, at the building level, but I'll sit down and, and, and I'll make sure we follow up with you, uh, in a real timely manner about it.
Okay, we have Rachel.
Selena.
Selena.
I'm sure I don't want that microphone to work. I'm telling you, it's a pity not to. Um, I'm gonna, thank you so much for your time. And also, uh, we're pretty strong as students in the high school. And I may, I am sophomore this year, who was, my son is, um, we've been with the marching band and music program for two years. I was only involved last year and, um, this year, you could say I don't know myself to even head first, I don't even intend to say this word, because I'm not sure what the role of was. And I apologize if I've known about this incorrectly. Um, I know this since this year, I had a relationship with another son that went to high school if I'd known that, if I'd known Mr. Libson, we've seen him in office, but I have no problem going into office once a while. Um, I am the parent, um, and it's safe to say, we're the music boosters that have been the one, two, fix the uniforms. Uh, ever since August or so, when the students came back to school, um, I came in with a sewing machine and needle and thread. Personally, I spent a quarter dollar's worth of sewing materials to fix these uniforms. The uniforms, initially, we had two hundred and twenty-three uniforms purchased in nineteen ninety-one. Of them, we currently have in our possession two hundred and three uniforms. The other twenty or so of mine are gone due to the shedding and sell of the uniforms that they gave and lost our, even if they were. Of those two hundred and three we have right now, we don't, or nobody has wearable, if by any standard, they are used for scraps that I've been using to recreate the uniforms that the band is using currently right now. So we have about eight uniforms that the band members are using to bake. Out of those eight uniforms, I have personally sewn a hundred and sixty athletic buttons, eighty shoulder buttons, those are the buttons that go under the, the athletics to keep the hips closed, a hundred and sixty, um, buttons that go inside the jackets, two hundred and forty snaps, ninety hands, forty-five pants have been fixed, twenty sleeves have been fixed. I've three sized tall uniforms. I have personally taken from my students, who unfortunately did not have the uniforms to fit the student, I have taken two uniforms to put into one uniform to make the student have the uniform fit. They weren't embarrassed and they weren't getting the uniforms too tight. And I fixed fifty holes in various spots on the ass sleeves. I have a hundred and seventeen pictures of uniforms that I actually, frankly, I gave up taking pictures because I was supposed to give them that many pictures, but I have a hundred and seventeen pictures of these uniforms stained, but it's missing holes, the hands, it's, it's literally, out of the eight that we have right now, as of today, and by ten, there's twenty-two uniforms I still need to fix. Of the uniforms that these students are wearing today. Because we're at Buffalo Wild Wings for a, you know, a house ceremony that they were ecstatic to be involved in, um, they do so much for the community. They're a long tour to the heat based on seven events, like we'll do. There's a hole in the ear of one of the students, they were out with bikes and it popped up. And this is how they're representing Marlboro. And there's only so many music parents that can sew and tie the needle and thread. We can't stand by, this student, it's a community event, and so up they're touched. I'm sorry, kids, we can't do that. As far as I can wear, and this is just as far as underwear, we're the only principal that does not have it to wear for marching band during Christmas. Um, I know that one of the parents was having enough to date and ribbons, the football team has socks, the cheerleaders have pom poms and the dance team has big bows and the football team, everything. The marching band doesn't represent Christmas, so for our game on the twenty-second, next weekend, they're not going to represent. There's, what time, it matters six hundred dollars for clothes, eight clothes, I don't want to march again. I haven't even gotten into hats. I recall down the hat road, the clothes were worn last year, um, to the storm we had during the festival, the marching, the band festival. I do believe that those were replaced, however, to get eighty, it was about six hundred dollars. I did speak to Buffalo Wild Wings, I believe, to help us with that. Um, the boosters have been really good, they're getting as much as they can, but you, you need to understand, there's a variety of these uniforms, they will not last any longer if you, you can't take and replace. The fabric is very thin, so it's, it's not going to work. Um, I was going to go to Dalton and I went online to see what the best route is to go with uniforms if we are planning that. Um, we've just got to get bibers and black, so we can be doing it anymore. If we take the bibers and make black, it would be easier in the long run and less expensive to replace those. We should get one or two of those and then we can replace the pants. The bibers are like, they're almost key pants, um, and then one, eight piece key pants. They don't have the suspender, they fall down and they're not, they're not raw material. So if they just cap on, the hands have a cap at the bottom, so you don't have to sew this, you don't have to sew the hands, you don't have to fix the hands every season for each student. So it does make more sense in the long run. Um, and it's just a better, it's a smarter idea, knowing that we have to do, obviously, the jackets, we have to, for Marlboro, and we'll have our colors. So I just wanted to be clear with the numbers. I do have invoices here, um, that I heard to, to, for the, where the uniforms were purchased initially. So the numbers are nineteen ninety-one is when the uniforms were initially purchased and in two thousand and two was the last time they got additional uniforms. You don't replace the uniforms, just additional uniforms. There's never been a replacement. So I think if you're trying to read pictures or numbers, um...
Thank you, Ms. Selena. And, and I'll add though what I, what I said previously, I mean, we'll, we'll follow up. I think the next time I have any kind of fender bender, I'm going to have you come over and take some documentation of my, uh, but I, I will follow up.
Next up is Brian Moon.
Hello, I'm Brian Moon, I'm a senior at Marlboro High School. I've been part of the music program for, basically since, actually, four years. I have been an active member of the music community. I am a drum major for our marching band. For those of you that don't know, I'm the guy that plays the saxophone. Um, yeah, for the folks, we came here for you to explain to you guys the situation. Um, I think the parents did a great job of explaining exactly what our situation is. I just want to put out there that, of course, um, older than me, um, some of my relatives, Michael Jordan was playing, I think. That's not the, I want to speak about. Oops. All right. So last week, or, yeah, was a week of respect. Um, with respect is very great for our school because we have a new, the United States, uh, basically, our school is very positive about that. I'm very grateful that our school teaches us about respect and about how to treat others. I just want to put out there that it's very disappointing, actually. Couple weeks ago, the Marlboro band, we went to Cold Tech to, uh, basically play for football teams, we always do. When we arrived there, um, we weren't prepared with, um, very enthusiasm from some of the people. We, as a band of, you know, seven kids, we needed someone to sit, we needed someone to stay and so that we could actually play in a local area too. A lot of, um, home parents, um, some spectators, um, they were saying very, um, not, they were saying very bad things to our band, my band. I think it's very disappointing that, um, you know, a, a district built on respect, self-respect, is what actually, um, I appreciate who's involved in this, and who's here with us today, and they've been supporting the music program, like the men's game. I really, um, I'm really grateful for that, but it wasn't really disappointing that we had to make when, um, his parents were showing his disrespect, cursing at us, um, telling us that it's a football game, so, um, we shouldn't be there because, um, the seats are for the spectators, um, like that, whatever. But, um, what really disappointed me was the next day, actually, the Monday, I thought it was Saturday, my band teacher, who's been at our school for the past thirty-one years, he's been based on this program, he basically, um, just rebuilt through this program for the past thirty-one years. He's been giving children, the students who couldn't really find a place in any other activity, let's say sports or arts, he gave them a voice through music. Um, and obviously that's a great thing because, um, every student should have an idea of what they're attaching or, um, at this point, that's true. At this point, the team that told me that one of our administrators informed of that, um, something I posted on social media, um, was that I should break down. What I posted, it wasn't bad, I, I wasn't, um, using a profane language, I was just stating the facts, I was stating that the past thirty-one years we've been doing this, we've been supporting the football team, rain or shine. Um, even as the kids sitting there, um, all seem to be feeling it. Um, it's, it's incredible how you can have disrespect against from people that are here trying to support. Um, I wasn't born to understand that, Mr. Ryan told me to take, to post that because I don't know why I was not, um, I wouldn't say anything negative, I was just stating the facts. In a school where we just, we, we respect and in a school where we teach students to stand up to, um, people who are offenders or people who are, um, just disrespecting us, I found it very unusual that, A, the administrator would be discouraging students, speaking of, or a group of kids that he's been with and a group of kids that he's been a part of and has been leading for the past four years. Um, it's very disheartening, I think, but I think that, um, I still think that, um, we have future with music program. Because of the older moments of working with the teachers and students, um, most are caught up, I've gotten nearly a hundred fifty views and I've gotten numerous, um, messages showing support. These are football players, these are cheerleaders, this is kids in football activities and they're showing support, yet some people are very, um, I would say, um, they're not satisfied with something that we're doing for them, or it is. I just wanted to put it out there, um, thank you so much for listening.
Did you end up having, what did you do? Did you have a stand, you stand up and play at this football game, I call it? You had a stand up? You had a place to sit?
Um, no, um, the student actually had to come and tell the issue to the parents, um, once again, support, support us a lot.
So you had a place to sit and perform?
Yes, um, yes. I have heard that the parents have also on social media posted something that's very disrespectful to the students. It's more aggressive than it was. This is not about the parents, it's about students. Music students should have a voice.
Sorry that happened.
Yeah, but Brian, I, I agree with you, you know, we'll, we'll, some, sometimes, um, you know, social media is a blessing and a curse sometimes, you know? And, and I think that, um, it's, it's, it's a great vehicle that it puts information out, allows folks to express themselves. It, it can communicate a perspective and, and, and the force behind that is, is rapid, right? That you can marshal a lot of disparate voices very, very quickly. Um, sometimes folks take it very differently than it's intended. You know, email doesn't have tone, posts don't have tone and sometimes folks, you know, you say something, they say something and there's misunderstandings. What we find is most of the things that we, we ultimately end up addressing at the heart is some sort of misunderstanding, right? Um, adult behavior at student events really gets my goat, right? So, um, I'll address that as well. Um, you know, but the, uh, it, it's not, um, you know, uh, I'm glad to hear that Mr. Boylan addressed it at the game. Uh, I'll follow up with that as well. Uh, you know, folks have a right to express themselves, you know, whether it's student, staff, you know? So I, I don't, I don't know, and I don't pretend to know the, the, the very specifics, but we'll, we'll have a nice long conversation tomorrow and, and, and look into it and move forward.
Okay, and last up is Evan Chau.
Ladies and gentlemen of Florida, thank you for allowing me to talk on the stage. My name is Evan Chau, I am the, I'm a alum of Marlboro High School, class of twenty sixteen. I currently attend the university, uh, University of Nihon University, class of twenty sixteen. Um, and I currently serve in the marching band at Nihon. The reason why I do is because as superintendent of the campus and president of the campus, I told that for, I always say that, where I came from. I started out on this actual, I'm a fellow, in, in, in high school and I started marching when I grade year at Marlboro High School. The reason why the sole music program decided to bring me to Nihon University was because of the experience I had at Nihon High School. Um, so I'm sure I will handle the, um, the things, um, that have been brought to, brought to you this evening by the three different issues we have to the parents and students and the mom. Um, so I will keep it brief, but I, I, I do want to take my two cents in that. Um, marching band has, has kept me going through actually. I was very active in high school and sometimes it was just all invited to those in Marshall Park, um, they've been through this. Uh, they were a family and they continue to be a family for me at, at Nihon University. So to see something like this happen to, uh, me so much, um, I'm very sorry. Um, I, I will end up asking you to put yourself in our situation. When you are asked to represent the district, the school, you will put yourself in a suit and bring yourself to speak proudly about what you came up with. However, you ask the band to play and represent Marlboro High School and you give them uniforms that are color plus, so stained, yellow and some, not even, but probably will be that I believe from my attention. Um, and you ask them to represent Marlboro High School, it's discouraging and in fact... And in fact, we have the same issue currently, we had the same issue at the Ohio University , currently, where you just wanted yourselves to get, to get people. So, I do say, it is possible, because the Ohio University band is all students from, so to see students come together for an issue is important. And so, I come here as a long day, we're only a few months out, we look back on where we came from, and see the issue, in that, you know, we are proud of what we do, and we show up to these things every week, and you've asked us to do said things in ready attire, and it's contradictory, and that, we just want a plan. We're not asking to see results come in two days, it's further not possible, but I was closely, as almost two hours ago, we were swatted away, asked not to speak, and in fact, we just want to see something come through. Let us be the base of Marlboro High School here. And if you are going to ask us to do such things, then just ask that you put a plan in place so we can definitely come.
Thank you.
Next up is the agenda itself, which is G1 to K1, I'm going to take that in one shot. Motion.
I have, I have abstaining.
Second, thank you, Sam. Okay, discussion. What do you want to say?
Yeah, I'm abstaining from Pete Bruno for his trip to the New Jersey School Boards, and for Mr. Sampson's trip to New Jersey School Boards, and under K, Cole Cameron, Coltech High School Assistant Wrestling Coach, I abstain from those.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Boitz.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno, as noted?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes, but I, except for K1, I abstain.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, next up is old business, new business. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, a motion for something.
Motion for directives.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So shall you say, so shall be written, thank you for coming.